I bet you would have, that would have come in really handy. And I saw a lot of similar looking containers in certain pictures. Yeah, we ran, we ran into that situation time or two.
Whenever you want to.
I guess we're not going to play on Jeremy. Nobody's had a text from.
You don't get to make interviews.
Yeah, because when I go back and listen, and I know that's what everybody's hearing, it just makes this sound whenever like you did a tech. Thing, yeah, but it's okay.
I'm gonna put it, I have to start next week when I go back, I have to close out this year. And I guess kind of my finances, you have to, but I have to close out the school year this year and start the new school year essentially first. It's online administration, so I take care of every standard.
All enroll online?
You have to follow up, you see if they actually do it correctly.
Process every one of them.
There's probably a microphone, it might, could be a microphone.
I think it's.
And now we're holding steady or?
Okay. All right, we, it's five thirty and we are live on the. Film, so Glendale lead us in the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So much, I'm happy.
Nice conversation. Okay, well, welcome to the June meeting of Coward City Council. And we, we do have some items tonight, but it's not a very, very long agenda. A little, a little point, we've had a great weekend or two around here. It's been a, been a busy season for Coward City. And with that said, um, I guess I'll wait for, put Blair on the spot later. But we've had, how many pickleballers in our, in our midst? Did we get a, a count? Two hundred and two competitors.
No, three days, four. And only forty-five minutes of weather delay.
Yeah.
That was impressive.
Two hundred and, two hundred and two competitors.
And tonight is now married to a legend, oh, that's awesome.
Are you?
Oh, that's true.
It was already, now everybody knows it.
I'm looking for Kevin's name on the sign up, so I never did, and said he was gonna play this year. Oh, okay.
Scott's gonna work on him for next year.
And, uh, Major League Fishing put on quite a show. Kentucky Lake put on quite the show. And I've become addicted to watching that stuff on, on, uh, on screen and, and watched, I think I was out on the pontoon boat, watching the Major League Fishing as, as Mr. Wheeler drove by with his entourage of about two or three dozen bass boats. That was, that was pretty cool.
And he is such a nice person. He truly is. He's, he won his first tournament when he was about eighteen years old. He won, that year he won the All-American and he won the Forestwood Cup same year and he, he really has a, a story to tell.
Yeah, and he, he told a lot of fond memories of Kentucky Lake and his childhood and his late father and uh, and, and the trophy he hosted said Coward City on it.
I like it.
Anyway, it's pretty good, pretty cool. Pretty cool. But, uh, a lot of good work there. So without, uh, going along any, any other thing than that, I do have a comment on etiquette for council meetings, since we are being recorded. And I know that we like to be kind of offhanded with our comments. But the recording is not much without good audio. So we're gonna get more stringent on using our audio tool. So we're gonna make a, a recorded record, audio record, we need to use the technology. So, uh, we're gonna to make sure that we're doing that. And Glenda's gonna do it right now. That's something I've been meaning to mention for quite a number of meetings now. So with that said, we'll start with the customary item on the agenda, uh, about approving last week's minutes. Last month, excuse me.
Yesterday's?
Yesterday's, no.
Uh, my commotion we've put.
A second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor? All right, thank you for that part of the business there. Um, visitors and petitioners, I think we have a yard of the season. Do we have anybody else here seeking to talk to the council meeting? No? All right.
Uh, so we have a spring yard season. And, um, the folks at judge, they don't know who anyone is. They don't know where they live, who that person is. So it's pretty nice. Um, however, when this person, uh, was selected, um, Kada was kind of like, I don't know about this. And then they were like, no, they worked really hard. They deserved to be recognized. So, uh, the winner of the spring two thousand twenty-five, um, yard of the season is Scott Shelton. Just kidding, it's tonight. We know tonight does.
Glad you liked this.
Now there are two legends.
I was about to say, two legends.
Athens got along, Athens got along.
We put Evelyn's name in the next.
You didn't expect that?
No.
Well, when she announced it, I thought that was the legging thing that was being. There we go. There we go. So you've got some bragging rights to throw after a long evergreen.
That's right.
There you go.
It was always an idea to say Scott.
Oh, okay, that's funny.
Scott's, Scott's just a, just a hard help.
He just mows.
Your face was great. Yes, I mean, I had no idea either.
Okay, so, um, that said, we have some old business to attend to. We've got a second reading or considering a second reading of some changes to the code of ordinance relating to the collection and disposal of garbage in Coward City. So, are you ready?
Sure.
I guess we have to make a motion in a second.
Make a motion.
Well, we read it first? Okay, let's read it first.
Well, I just noticed this is a summary of an ordinance amending ding. Uh, but we can fix that. Chapter fifty-one point oh one through fifty-one point ninety-nine of the Coward City Code of Ordinance relating to garbage collection and disposal. The city council of the city of Coward City adopted an ordinance amending fifty-one point oh one through fifty-one point ninety-nine of the Coward City Code of Ordinance revising the rates charged and the procedures utilized by the city in serving its garbage collection and disposal customers. The following portion of the ordinance establishes the rates to applicable to garbage collection and disposal effective upon publication of the ordinance. Residential customers shall be required to utilize only appropriate refuse containers as defined in fifty-one oh one. There should be a charge of eight dollars fifty cents per month for container for refuse pickup at the unpaid portion of the right of way in front of the dwelling and a charge of twelve dollars per month for refuse pickup at the side or the rear of the dwelling. Each residential customer shall be allowed to present one container for collection twice each week. Two, cus- uh, commercial customers shall be required to utilize appropriate refuse containers as defined in fifty-one oh one. Each commercial customer shall be assessed a fee of twelve dollars and thirteen cents per month for one container of refuse collected twice each week. Additional containers shall be assessed only when the city clerk slash treasurer and or the city administrator determine that a customer has established a pattern of usage requiring more than one container of refuse collection. A copy of the entire ordinance is maintained and may be reviewed without charge at city hall E sixty-one in Sabam in Coward City Kentucky during normal operating hours. The understanding attorney is licensed to practice in the law of Commonwealth Kentucky and throughout certified as an authority. Is a summary of the ordinance that ordinance of the city of Coward City bearing the number entitled inside of it.
I do have a question. And maybe we didn't last week, but it, that each residential cup customer shall be allowed to present one container twice a week. Can't they buy the other container?
They can ask for another container if they need one, yes. Yeah, it's just that's, that's the minimum. So if they need more, are we assessing?
Should you have that in there? I mean, that's what I'm.
Well, we've got it in there. If it need, if it's assessed, that we will add, we will add, give them.
Okay, okay, gotcha. All right.
So.
So I will now make a motion to adopt the second reading.
So just to clarify, so a second container is a, is a second pickup?
That's another, that's another.
Okay, all right. So we got a motion to adopt. That's in a second. And you're gonna do a roll call, right? Okay.
Is the other question, is the fee for the second container in here, or is it the same? It's, it's not the same.
It'll be the same price.
It is, okay.
Paragraph.
There's no, there's no, each is the same price for each container.
Paragraph one, uh, or is it second paragraph of the document about item one? Shall be a charge of eight fifty per month per container.
Container, yeah. Aye.
Okay, Councilwoman Shelton.
Yes.
Councilman Howard.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Hale.
Yes.
Councilman Rao is absent. Councilman Brown.
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Okay, it is adopted.
All right.
On the, uh, just so you'll know, it opens a talk where it says, uh, a summary of an ordinance amending. It's amending ding.
Yeah.
You got a telephone?
You did? That's just, that's just.
She did, yeah.
I thought that was a new legal term.
Right up there with pontificating.
I'll fix that.
Okay. New business. We don't have any new business actually listed. But, um, I have some information to share, go ahead and then.
Well, you might go ahead and share your information, cause maybe you've covered what else could I ask?
Okay. Um, I signed an executive order and we have granted, uh, another holiday to city workers. Juneteenth, June nineteenth is, is observed as a city holiday. Which brings our total to thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. And there's some changes, uh, for the police uh, having to do with how they break up, how they handle the, the floating holidays that they enjoy. Instead of, or to account for holiday staffing. And wanted to pass that along to everyone. Okay?
That wasn't it. That's right.
All right, so that, that I wanted to share that news.
Good, I love it.
All right. Anyone else have some new business?
This is sort of in between the two. But have we designated or did we designate someone to, to approach the school board about having access to the school during?
There is, um, yes, we have. This close, this close to having it.
Cause I think someone has to go to the school board meeting to do that, no? Or not?
I don't think so. I think it should have to be approved.
No, I mean, Greg has been in contact. Uh, we've looked at the contracts that are there. Uh, I think my understanding, we're this close to getting what we want. And we'll be, I fully expect it to be done next month here.
Okay.
That's my, that's my update. I don't, uh, we, we submitted it to, uh, KLC for their two cents worth. The biggest thing is we're gonna have to, that the city does security when that's happening. And, uh, then we want to have an accompanying press release to exactly how that thing's utilized. When the news comes out that we have, you know, have this agreement. How's it, how's it, what, what does it mean to our residents and how's that go along with understanding from administration side of what we need to do to make sure things taken care of properly? And I'm, I'm thrilled to death, uh, and certainly running in the dusk, uh, to Benton on this one, okay? And, uh, we'll, we'll get that, uh, there. And I think that, uh, uh, everybody is very favorable on this, and I think it's gonna prove out to be very good. So I think other, other new business that we need to, just like the school was very receptive to the idea, whole idea, so, okay.
Special purpose vehicles, the, uh, legalizing on the road, where we had on that. I know, and we have any, I don't know that we ever even really said we wanted to do it or not. I think we just briefly discussed it.
Yeah, I think the comments were favorable and we're looking at it, uh, county, county government did it even before it was finalized and published. And, uh, I don't know the status of that right off. Do you want to?
I think it's codified in July, July twenty-seventh.
Okay.
So we could do something reference, you know, reference that date. If it affected that date, that would be fun.
I think some of the work for us to sweep up is how it affects our existing ordinances that allow us to operate, uh, vehicles like we do. In which we, we did adopt the ATV type ordinance as opposed to the pure golf cart ordinance. Remember, one of them, we had to do the inspection fee and all that. We kind of, so part of the holdup on us, on waiting for it to get codified is to make sure that we go through our existing ordinance, make sure we don't have any conflicts. Not forgotten about, um, I'm getting a few calls, I'm sure probably each one of you guys are too on that. And, uh, I, I took away, if, if we want to have, well, I bet. So if, and it's, you know, people want to, you know, people who have those vehicles and, and, you know, the ones that bother to call a, a council member on this are the ones that are, are uh, follow the rules. And those are the folks that we want to encourage instead of people who just run willy nilly. But what we took away is that, uh, council was generally in, in favor of that. And, uh, is it, I mean, that's the, and so we, we've taken it and run, running with it that we do want to adopt it on our, on our city streets, which would be on all of our streets, except the county, uh, didn't accept anything with over fifty-five miles an hour. Which is none of our roads, so. Okay?
I don't think we've got any roads that are over forty-five that are city streets. I think anything over forty-five is state road.
Yeah, and even Oak Park State and it's forty-five.
But the ordinance would include that. It would include all the roads within the city limits.
Mm-hmm.
With the exception, we do have no control over the state roads. We can't, we don't set policy on them. I mean, they'd be able to ride on it, yes.
That's what I meant.
Cause the state's allowing them to do it anyway.
So you're saying even if we?
They can arrest people.
Even if we don't pass it, they could ride on the state road?
Yeah, states allow them to do it.
I'm not sure about that. I think that the, they're relying on the cities too.
I think, yeah, that was sort of the way I understood it.
Like any idea on that?
It's gonna be the jurisdictional, uh, boundaries.
Okay, so what would be the city then? Okay, all right.
So I've, I've had calls from people working at the plants that don't live in the city that are concerned because I, you know, they're, they're thinking they may, you know, one or two days a week may want to do that if they're going somewhere else from work. And, and I understand that people will want to try that out for sure, and that, that'll be fun. But, uh, well, I don't know where it'll finally, finally wind up. No, it, it, once the, once the new rubs off that, that air conditioning feels pretty good.
Takes a little bit of work to get them up to, cause most of them don't have the proper mirrors and a lot of, lots of plate, things like that. But that's, that's getting his ready to go and it's been a lot of.
Gives you a new line of accessories to make sure you got on the shelf.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm sure, damn, Tim's probably making a list.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. He's doing answers.
It seems that.
It looks great. Well, we'd have to get, I mean, if we want to have that ready for July, somewhere around third week of July, when that would be, um, able to, you know, be legal.
Yeah, we should consider the next council meeting.
What limits of?
Then we'll have to have two readings. It'll be like a big reading.
So if you wanted to adopt it as it states in the, in the statute? Was there a modification?
I had, I didn't have any modifications that I would request personally.
You've got a speed limit to go by.
Yeah.
A, a, anyway, and then if there's a state road that is fifty-five, then yeah, I think just leave it like it is, like.
Just reference the state statute then.
And the county, it's, they passed it like it's, like it's written as well, or did they change anything?
No, they haven't.
They had it fixed. Because they have a road that's over fifty-five.
Got you, got you.
Mining back coming, the little one here is fifty-five.
But it's not over fifty-five. They have six forty-one, that's sixty-five.
And speed limit is fifty-five miles per hour.
And ninety-five is fifty-five for a little bit.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, and I think everybody agrees that, uh, we do want to handle that in July and be on time. Which has been why we brought it up when we did to get there. So maybe a little stutter step for not being prepared at this particular meeting, but we'll, we will get on it. And we're already on it, uh, but the details of what it takes to get there, not so much, so.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
These vehicles won't be allowed on the multi-use trail.
What's the limit on the multi-use trail? I don't, I, I don't want them to be.
No, it, it says.
Vehicles can't be capable of over twenty-five mile per hour.
Yeah.
So that's what you're trying not to do is make it where we accidentally include them having to have all of that.
If it can exceed twenty-five miles an hour, it's not supposed to be on that road, on that multi-use trail.
I mean, like, you know, you'd have people who drive there the fourth just to get there, but nobody's ripping and roaring and stuff. We have had guys just coming and stuff, but other than that, I don't see anybody on it, you know?
Well, side by sides or four-wheelers are not actually allowed on that multi-use trail.
You do see them some, but they're not supposed to.
Just golf carts.
Yeah, I know they're not, but I'm just saying like Fourth of July.
Oh, well, we don't talk about.
Yeah, that's what I'm playing, that's.
They got, got their own.
I, I think having to drive July, this might be the best, biggest.
Yeah.
I don't think that changing this as it is or accepting this as it is would change anything. It says that nothing in this section authorizes the street legal purpose vehicles in areas that are not open and moving for use. So unless there's something in our ordinance that allow that, this wouldn't change that.
Okay.
Someone's drafted this, isn't it? Setting the extension.
Okay.
Yes, okay, yes.
Thank you.
So we'll get that, uh, in front of us in July and maybe do a special call, make sure we can have two readings and bring it in if that's the desire. We'll, we'll, we'll talk about it the first reading in July, and if we want to do a special call to knock it off before we can. Do what?
First reading, I always want to be that bad either.
No, we can talk about it.
It could be.
Yeah. Alrighty.
You get to the general.
There's not anything else that maybe wants to talk about? Let's go to departmental reports. We okay with that? Vale's got anything else? Right. Blair, since I forgot you totally last month, you got to go first this month.
We had kids arguing apart on Saturday and had to pivot a little bit because of the weather. Um, it was not quite as fun as what it could be if it was outside, but we dealt with it and it was good. Had a good crowd. We had twenty-nine kids register for the business fair and one of the kids said that they made three hundred dollars. I can't believe that. I'm like, that's awesome. Another one said that they made ninety-eight dollars and, but anyway, they were really excited about it and it was good to see, uh, some young entrepreneurs selling lots of different things. They're really good.
They love it. It's popular. Their families love that, man.
Oh, good. Yeah, the, uh, and the library, uh, big thanks to the library for allowing us to they're, they literally let us use their training room and also helped do the crafts, um, so that was good too. Uh, there was a few casualties of tents, but everything else was a success. Um, Food Truck Friday's underway every Friday, um, in the park, two thirty to one thirty. It's been, uh, pretty busy. It can always be a little bit busier. The next yard of the season is July thirty-first. That will be the summer yard of the season. So if you know someone that you would like to nominate, uh, you can fill that form out. The pageant is June the twenty-third at six o'clock. Uh, we have seventeen registered right now and just a reminder to everyone, you have to register before you get in. We will not be registering at the door. Uh, it's just too chaotic at that time to take registration and try and start on time.
So when's registration open up?
Uh, it's open now, right now.
So it has to be done before day, uh, June twentieth.
June twentieth is the deadline. Um, it's twenty dollars to participate. And if you want to do the photogenic route, uh, it is an extra five dollars. You have to bring a photo of your child for that. And it's casual, it's not a fancy pageant, it's just something fun. Um, the theme is summer red, white and blue wear, so. Um, July fourth, it's, I cannot believe it is almost here. It blows my mind, but, uh, it is. We have a really great band lineup this year. Um, Mitch Knight, who works for, um, uh, the garbage truck couple works. He is gonna kick it off at ten AM with his saxophone playing. Uh, he's gonna play for about thirty minutes at ten and then at eleven o'clock, we'll have Candace Gunn, then Black Mounds, Sticky Bones, Adrian Lee, Dusty Bottoms, Underdogs, and then Deja Blues will finish it out. So music from ten AM until eight PM.
Times Dusty Bottoms.
Dusty Bottoms is at five. Yeah. Rain is at six. Uh, the theme this year is Christmas in July and, um, lineup is at five PM at Pathway Baptist Church. Uh, they are gonna be giving away, um, best golf cart decorated, best float and best classic car. Are the three, um, judging, things being judged. Um, also because our scavenger hunt, uh, golf cart scavenger hunt got canceled because of the weather, um, we're rescheduling it for July the third. So the day before July fourth, it's on a Thursday night, uh, at six o'clock from six to seven will be done and we're just gonna call it red, white and blue. Scavenger hunt on, uh, six PM on July the third.
Millions.
Um, this year we had, or I know, well, la- not last month, but the month before that, I talked about wanting to hit that ten thousand mark. We did hit on Facebook, um, we did hit that and we just went right on past it and we're at eleven thousand and twenty-six likes on Facebook, which is awesome. Uh, last month we had one hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-four views and fifteen thousand engagements, which is good. Uh, and then on our website, we had five thousand four hundred and fifty-nine views, which is up by about eighteen percent in May. And then the top five viewed sites on our website was tourism, uh, Pay Online. Everybody's looking to pay online, uh, services, which is where like Public Works, Garbage, uh, Fire Police are. And then, uh, Kentucky Dam Arts and Craft Festival was on there too. Had lots of hits on that. Uh, their calendar, of course, and then our contact us page.
And the, the, the overwhelming question, what's hap- what month is household and what month is? You can find the answer on the website. And you can find out what a household thing is too.
You can.
Yes.
Front page. So. Do they have any questions? Okay.
I got a, I got an email. Certainly. So we, we.
Yeah. On Wednesday, uh, Kada is having a meeting, um, at the civic center about the, um, sorry. It's the Kentucky Heritage Council. They are going to present about, um, their programs that they offer. So if anybody's interested, please let me know. However, if there is, it is this Wednesday at?
Five thirty at night.
Five thirty?
No.
Four thirty?
Four thirty to five thirty.
Just one hour? Four thirty.
Okay.
Okay, I've got mine down to four. We'll just leave it that way.
So if you are gonna participate, we need to let Glenda know because we will have to, um, assess that. Um, but if not, then we'll be good. Um, I don't, I, she said that she would, um, she, Dwayne? Dwayne said that he would, that she would, goodness, she would, um, present for about thirty minutes and then talk about it. Um, so if anybody wants to participate, they're more than welcome to come and chat about, um, the programs that they offer by the state.
I had said I was going, was anybody else?
I already said I would.
I'll tell you what I do, I'll take it. Once the email is gone.
It's my anniversary, but I may try to make it, so.
So sound, sound.
One more and I got it. We got a special call going.
But that's, did you just have to publicize?
Glenda, special call.
You just have to publicize it, right? I'm, I'm gonna go ahead.
We'll have to go through the meeting and the whole thing. We'll have to go through the meeting and the whole thing.
Oh, surely not. We gotta go to church together sometimes.
It happens.
If we don't participate.
Linda researched. We're gonna have four people.
I, I can stack.
I'll sit out in the hallway.
That's okay. I'll, I'll go.
No, it's my, it's our anniversary, either or not, but I, y'all can, yeah. So, so I'll stay out. I'll take one for the theme. But I'll get with Duane. I will hear about it.
Yeah, three is good. If it's more than three.
But since we got two taking it for the team.
That's right. We just hope Jeremy's not going.
Well, he should have got the email.
Okay, so that's.
Bobby did remind me too, the uh we are gonna do the museum again, so um it will be ten to four um on July fourth.
Ten to four?
Anybody wants to help set that up? I'll be gladly welcome anyway. That'll be twenty-four, twenty-five. July third is on, so it'll be the first, second, third.
It's Thursday, Friday, so, yeah. The third is a Thursday.
Third is a Thursday.
Yeah.
Right, the Fourth of July is on Friday, so we could set up Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So that week, um, what we set up.
Just need to set aside three days of your time. Yeah.
I saw it, but it's in Ridge because it was Wednesday and then this afternoon, they registered it with Wednesday, you know?
Yeah, yeah. So that'd be, that's, that's gonna be an important.
I hope so.
So. But no, we're gonna have council there, but not too much. And be interested in learning more about the uh, the proposal. All right, uh, departmental reports continue with utilities. Bobby, you ready to go? I'll have to make you come up, speak clearly into the microphone. You can blame Blair.
Yeah. Well, we uh, we relatively had a, I said relatively had a, whoa, my, thank goodness.
Slower than that, Ben.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you just jinxed it. Go ahead.
I know, well. Yeah, we've had, we had one break, one major break that we got fixed down Plantville Off Road. Other nap, most of our ongoing jobs are still going and rain's been putting everything back. So we've just been delayed on those, like the Long Valley Project. They started back up last week, but rain got them too. Our headworks, our influence, it's uh here and there because of rain. But it's getting closer and we're still hoping towards the end of the month, having it done. And hopefully. Thing, yeah, not moving there.
We'd be glad to get that behind us.
Yeah.
So we're, 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 are we into scheduling the, the cut over yet? Not yet?
Yes. Well, it depends too. Uh, we're waiting on one more lid. Because the, of the, of the two lids that were ordered, one, one met specs, but the other one didn't. So we're having to wait on another lid for it.
Okay.
And uh, once it's in, then we can do our pressure test for the wet wells and uh. Elect- electrician, electrician can finish their setups and ties and stuff. And then that's when we can look for the tire. So I think they were looking, they were actually, they said, I think June. They were looking before the rain and stuff. I think it was like the sixteen that they were looking. And now it's probably. But like the Long Valley Project, it's supposed to be towards end of month too. They're, all they like is coming back down. The rest of Long Valley and then. Walter Project, I think that's here right now.
Seems awfully easy. How you doing the lift station?
Yeah, and we've got a, well, we've got the, the box all redid. We're just waiting on one more pump. We got the one pump in there running like it's supposed to now. We've got all the components for the new pump when we get it, the second one.
Ready to wire it in?
Yeah.
Okay, that's awesome. But if, if you guys don't know it, that, that's been a major. Part of work for the utility department and Bobby personally and come out of that in, in pretty good shape.
Yes.
For no small effort on your part. Appreciate it.
And it's, well, and, and it's, it's kind of a godsend too, because that lift station needs it.
It was on, it was on the radar screen.
Yeah.
But they said done, go now.
We're actually getting the. That's really all I got.
Thanks. Dan, you got anything to add?
Uh, John, I was gonna do was tell Ralph that we had dug back and got the. Study on the price increase and that and we're gonna be working on that.
The uh, utility board meeting had to be rescheduled off the normal meeting due to the new holiday of June nineteenth. Chief Davis, you got something?
Very good month.
Very good month. Very glad to hear that. Chief Cannon? Have to forgive Mike. He's, he's flown in from uh. Drove in. He wished he'd flown in.
Yesterday morning, I woke up at six. I was in Chatham, South Dakota. I went to the Badlands, Black Hills, uh. Mount Rushmore and Crazy Horse and then drove back.
On a Harley?
Dog trying to pick up. I was going back in town probably around noon. Got about two hours sleep. Anyway, so uh, the weather patterns have been pretty wild here, so uh, as far as tourism and stuff like that, as far as. The law enforcement aspect, uh, we're not on wood right now because it's. I hadn't, I hadn't anticipated more calls than what we've had come out. Now, we've had several and we've had services complaints and. Other stuff like that that obviously that are gonna come out, so we aren't dealing with that. Uh. Looking forward to the Fourth of July, praying for good weather and a good turnout for that as well. Uh. There's one item that I would like to uh mention and uh, the officers have got some new taser settings. And so we've got the old taser uh X twenty-six peaks and I would like to ask for a commission and surplus of uh. X twenty-six peaks and possibly uh donate them to an agency that can use them. We've already used the lifespan of them and as far as our policies and the procedures, it's too dated. For us to use and they cannot be warranty to work on. You can't give any parts back. But there are some agencies that are in need of that stuff.
Written determination. Or disposition.
I mean, how many units you have and all that jazz? We, we know. You know, any, any kind of approximate value or anything?
Uh, approximate value to us is literally nothing because we can't use them. Uh, but I would say. You're looking at probably two hundred dollars a unit.
How many years do you say? Today apparently.
So uh, we need council action on that or we're just.
We don't need a written determination, so you guys.
Yeah.
Wouldn't get anything care of. I just wanted to bring it up. And guys have any questions or anything?
No questions. Thanks, chief. John's going, you're doing double duty tonight. You don't have, you don't have your wingman.
I'm letting anybody call back on Brad's not here. All right, he's joined the surf and sand down in Florida this week.
He is. He's probably not. He's probably up, he's probably up off Ridge Road somewhere.
Something's been brought up about smoking at the splash pad is whether that's legal or not. The only, I have to go back and look at our ordinance. Our ordinance, I believe. States, um, but now this is just the, I've gotta go back and look at it, that it only affected the buildings. I don't know that anything to do with the parks or the, anything like that, but I need to go back and look because I can't swear to that, so. I'll, I will look into it, see what the ordinance said and then get back with everybody on that one.
And one thing about the question uh, on that, a lot of our rules had to do with health department, what they required. When you said that, so that might, might cover it with that. I don't know.
Generally, our sign down there at the, at the park covered what the health department requirements were, but I'll, we'll also look into that as well.
And there's a lot of rules written on that sign. I do know that. We don't think.
I don't know.
Oh, don't know.
I actually think it might, I think it, I think it probably is. I'm not sure.
I know the food and I think food and drink is. Paving in the parks has been delayed by weather.
Whether you like it or not.
Yeah, uh, hopefully with the weather, the way it is this, this week, they may be able to mobilize. So we'll see. I do know that they will not be here during the Fourth of July.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
They will not be here. I've, I've been told them, I said, do not be here the first of the month. So, uh, the airport lights, we've had issues with them. We had, apparently they had a lightning strike. We thought we had a board went out and that was just a circuit board, but apparently it was a lightning strike because it knocked out every bulb on the runway. They found that out. They replaced the board, lights didn't come on, replaced a couple of lights. Bingo. So now we've had to go back and we're waiting. We got the lights in, but the next day or so, they're gonna get all the lights changed, so.
Maybe the lights burning out saves the board.
So. Well, the board was out too.
Oh.
Well, it, 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 we figured it was a lightning strike, so. Uh, that's the, that's what I got this morning. Um. But we hope to have them up running for the end of the, the note on this, this Wednesday. And really, that's about it. The guys are getting, when we get this phone. That'll be after the first, after the Fourth of July. Yeah. I've been told them, I said, don't even get started. Don't even think about it.
July the second.
If they get, if they get started on the Fourth, before the Fourth of July, we've got a mess. So they're gonna wait till after the commemoration. I just told you to hold off until then. So. Good question. Yes, we're having fireworks. They're moving up onto the top of the hill and sit down in the bottom. They're just gonna come across the road, across the walking trail and up on them. Uh, where it comes up, just north of the uh pickleball court. And that's where we're gonna shoot them. It'll elevate them, I don't know, ten feet or so. So that'll help with the elevation on the overall shoot.
I asked for them to do that thirty years ago.
I know, you're not the only one, but we finally, we finally got that worked out, so. Yeah, so now we, that, now we have it where it's on a more elevated um plateau and it'll get the, the fireworks should work better. It'll be bit more visible anyway. So.
That's it?
That's it. We're trying to wrap up this year.
Okay.
So, you know, right now, we're, we're, I'm told no, no additional projects or issues unless they've got a. A purchase unless it's a, it's a maintenance issue, so. And of course, we gotta get with maintenance issues first thing this morning.
Well, yeah, didn't take a week off from that.
That's correct.
That's good. Well, maybe not so good, depending what to wear. Now, we got a airport report.
Yeah, the wandering gypsy's back.
Uh, as, as many of you probably already know, this is, this is actually aviation related. But if you heard that. Back there in Tennessee, in my county. A week ago yesterday, Ed the Zebra escaped.
See, yeah, so you came with news from Ed?
Ed the Zebra. Was tranquilized in a field yesterday safely. He was airlifted. To an area that was dry enough to support the horse trailer that he had escaped from that was fixed. So the, the door wouldn't open when he kicked. So Ed the Zebra has continued on his way down to Florida where he.
And look like he was having a good time in the video. It would be nice, yeah.
There's too much to eat in Rutherford County. But Ed, Ed is safe and the airlift was successful. Um, the grant application. And the scope and fee have been approved by the state for Hanson to perform. The design bid. The design spec and bid for the next T-hanger. That will be B I L money, bipartisan infrastructure law. Uh, money. We have the necessary leather from the FAA that. It can be used for a hanger, so everything kosher and. John has a copy for signature of the grant application for the state grant to perform those, that function. So we'll be working that project. Starting. Probably July one, state will authorize it after the first of the year. Um, the airport layout plan, I know some of you were anticipating looking at it today. I don't have it with me. I deemed it not necess- not, not ready. Um, but I will tell you this, the, the team that's working on it. Is diligently doing the alternative analysis that's required by the federal aviation administration. And it's consistent with the plans that you have previously seen. It's working out just fine. The other two projects, uh, we're still hearing crickets. On the fence project. And crickets on the happy project, precision approach slope. Um, and based on what I just heard, the conversation about the lightning strikes. The, the hunt we're trying to get over with the state is their insistence and electrical engineers' insistence that the main line. To the light system be replaced as part of the project. So if you have any indication from a third party that that might need to be done, it would, we could. Possibly get it in the Pappy project.
They're working on it, so I'll be, I'll do some asking, see what they got.
If there's been any damage beyond bulbs. That's it. That's all I have. Thank you for your patience.
Do have a question for you. Given the, what, what, what is the climate at the federal level for general aviation grants overall? But that seems to be a hot topic. Where, where, where have all the, is all the grant funding gone? So just generally, which way is the wind blowing in general aviation?
Uh, general aviation so far has been neglected. And I see that as a good thing. Right now, all the discussion is. How can the big airports, the top fifty-five airports in the country? That dominate the lobbying efforts and dominate the receipt, the federal money for expansion. It's all about them right now, and that's where the concentration is. But the good news is because general aviation is being neglected. That means nothing has changed and money is still. Personally, I was very suspicious that. General aviation would, would lose the B I L money, but that has not occurred. So. One of the things we learned in G, general aviation decades ago was if you keep your head down. Sit in the back of the room and keep your head down, you don't get called on. And as long as the, the money right now is flowing sufficiently to take care of our needs. So we got, we have our heads down.
Yeah. Well, you know, when um, I've been asked as mayor of a small community a couple of different times about. How those sorts of things are impacting us and the one thing that we do here, you know, the proper care and feeding of our airport, we depend upon. Grant money in order to be successful at that game. Other grant money, we can turn programs off. Really not programs, but capital on and off. Really not programs, but capital on and off, you know, depends on what the fed, federal government or other entities want to fund, right? But on the airport, it's one that we're. We need, we need some, some funding and some, some cash flow in order to keep everything up like it's supposed to be.
Uh, we, we were desperate for cash flow. Six years ago. Uh, there's been significant amounts of dollars appropriated. Since then. So far. Nobody, there hasn't really been any discussion about slowing that down.
So, you know, that's why it's imperative to go ahead and build out. Our facilities so we can generate some funds and and keep things.
Purpose of this grant application that that John has now. Uh, for the design is to get that B I L money committed. And based on the letter we received with the FAA, that is the case. And the state. Being a sponsor of the airport, they're they've been supporting.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate your experience and insight on that question. That's it. Okay, did I forget anybody this month? Scott hadn't said much. I saw Scott on Saturday in amongst the crowd. Well, how many people were down there at that fishing tournament down at at?
Yeah, there was. I would say seven hundred fifty to a thousand. Roughly at the high time. It was a great weekend to have them out here, um. If you guys, well, I know you guys track. Fast fishing more than I do, probably. But uh, it's great to see back fishing coming back.
Yes.
It's absolutely awesome. Um, trying to explain that to other folks from outside of the city is always interesting to try to explain too. But no, Park's been doing really well. Um, we're off about ten percent off of last year. But I think a lot of that can be attributable to a number of different things, not the least of which weather. I mean, you're not gonna play golf when it's raining sixteen inches. Uh, those kind of fun things that we got. We've also got a lot of infrastructure projects going on. Which affects lodging availability. Um, if you have been on Park recently, you'll see a bunch of trenches and all kinds of things. We've been doing electrical projects and executive cottages. We're working the projects at Marina. Um, actually, July seventh, is that Monday I built for? Yeah. July seventh, um, the golf course will be closing down for a couple of weeks because we will begin our greens renovation. And actual total replacement of greens. That'll be happening this summer and hopefully be done by Labor Day weekend. Um, and actually, not too long after that.
How long is it gonna be shut down?
Roughly two weeks. And then we'll be going into some temporary greens and then hopefully be able to have the new greens up and operational by. Labor Day weekend. That's our goal. The thing's very realistic goal. Um, and then probably this winter, if, you know, the state always does things a little bit backwards, um. Probably this winter, we will be getting new irrigation. On the golf course. If you have not ever been on our golf course, we have current nineteen seventies technology out there. And uh, it's piecemeal, so it's a total renovation of our irrigation. Other things that are happening is we are in discussion about our, well, let me back up a little bit. Um, we just went through our budgeting season. And in the state park system, they're, they're kind of slim as, as you may or may not know, roughly about seventy-five to eighty percent. Of our revenues come from what we can generate, yes. The rest of it actually comes from a line item in the state budget. Um, and then all our capital projects usually come from line items on the state budget, so that's actually how the funding works. Um, so we always have to generate, that's what we exist for. Um. In this next fall, starting next, next fall. Uh, Lake Barkley State Park will be closing the lodge for at least a year. Jenny Wiley State Park will be closing the lodge for at least a year. Um, I think Ken Lake, they've already begun the remodel of the campground, so their campground is closed. There's a number of campgrounds are closed. There's a number of amenity projects that are in operation. Therefore, revenues are going to be down. Thus, they're relying on Kentucky Dam to have revenues up, so it'll be interesting. And also watch every P and Q and every E. Um, in other words, every expense. They are watching our expenses extremely tight this year. Extremely tight, uh, so it'll be interesting to see how this all plays out over the next. Few months, but yes, um, we don't get an amenity project upgrade until probably the winter twenty-six, twenty-seven because of all this happening. They had to get into like, for example, the Barclay Lodge has got a serious mold issue. And ventilation issue, and it has for years, but they want to actually try to correct that. Things like that are actually what's happening, so we won't get into a major amenity upgrade. We'll get odds and ends. But no major amenity upgrade probably until winter twenty-six, twenty-seven. Here's what they're telling us. But in the meantime, we get all these fun infrastructure projects that aren't touchy feely. Nobody likes to. My wife gives me a hard time about talking about toilets. Okay, they just said, but you know what? If the toilet don't work, nobody got it. So toilets not working, nobody's happy, and nobody wants to pay money when a toilet doesn't work. And so we are, we finished phase one and we're about to go into phase two. They're in the midst of uh. Of the scoping and hopefully that bid will go out this fall. We are also probably gonna be bidding a uh water. Infrastructure upgrade also. Um, you can imagine if there is a pipe. Ever in existence, if you ever heard of a pipe, whether it's PVC. Uh, right, what are they called? Right part or so whatever. Uh, fiber, uh, tile, you name it, black iron, we have it on the park. We are that old. Um, as a matter of fact, the pipes, pipes and campground, that's where Old Gilbert Snow was before the the dam came in. Guess what? We have the old Gilbert Snow water lines at the campground. So hopefully we can get into this and actually do some upgrades. I'm tired of uh. Water, water leaks. You guys were talking about water leaks, um. I, I can tell you right now, you go out on a park, you're gonna find a water leak. You're just gonna find one, I guarantee you. Um, there'll be one somewhere, so just getting that alone fixed will be a major thing. Getting the electric infrastructure fixed, which we're in the midst of discussion with our electric provider for actually. Upgrading our electric. A number of years ago, we had a really good electric infrastructure and uh, somebody decided that it was green. We don't cut it. So you have trees going like this and a wire power line going right through the center, so we have constant power outages because of that.
Well, that's, that's fine until it isn't.
Uh huh, exactly. That's, and all this stuff, I mean, the same with water, same way with electric, same way with wifi nowadays too. People complain just as much about wifi as they do about any of that kind of stuff. And uh, when your wifi doesn't work. And you're paying a hundred and fifty bucks a night, people kind of get upset. So we're into that kind of thing, so those are what we're working on right now is.
Okay.
Electrical infrastructure.
It's good to see people hanging out though this weekend.
Oh man, it is busy. It's gonna continue to be busy. Uh, fishing has been, I mean, not only was it this weekend, but if you went back about a month, you had USA Bassin back. And if you don't know who USA Bassin is, they do smaller tournaments, but they do hundreds of tournaments almost. Literally, and they came back for the first time in five years. So it was awesome to see them. They were running two hundred fifty posts a tournament. For ten days, so. Yeah, so it's been a good year, it's just a lot going on.
Well, we hadn't had a presentation from you in a while, I appreciate it.
I, I had somebody contact me. Uh, via Facebook and ask if the city was responsible for the beach area. And I told her we were not.
No, you were not.
To either contact you, but I would suggest that she contact the Department of Parks because the director, because that's where the money was.
Well, I would still say contact me. Did they have a specific?
She didn't say it, since we weren't, I did not, you know, but.
Starts heading upstairs.
Well, you know, the sort of the whole condition there, you know, I mean, really, but.
Yes, and I realize.
I was thinking, I mean, I don't know, I didn't ask her, but I still say if you just build some steps for people to walk down later and that's not. I'm just assuming maybe, and this probably.
We've had a water outage at that shelter. Um, and that's because of a number of different purchasing issues and all.
Well, I, I would assume you'd had a lot of trash and stuff too with the I want.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
I did tell her you first.
That's a constant, but yeah, so I think, I don't have a problem, I'll talk to them. I'll talk to anybody, doesn't mean that I'll answer the questions, I'll talk to them. All right, thank you, folks.
All right. So now council, I've had one council member call me about an issue, so I'm gonna put Dustin on the spot first. Dustin, you got something you want to talk about?
Yeah. So, um, the beta, I'm not even bringing this up because it can open a can of worms, but. I'm pretty passionate about it, so uh, here we are. I think it's a good time right now to um. Start to discuss ways that we can make some of our residential roads a little safer. For uh pedestrians or people on bikes and and, you know, kids playing, things like that. Um, specifically. Evergreen and uh. Uh, Hickory.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and people have probably talked to y'all about it, but there's a, you know, you've got two roads there that are kind of. Passageways into other neighborhoods, so there are a lot more heavier traffic than some of the other roads. Also, most of the houses on both of those roads are really packed together tightly. They're real narrow lots and the houses are up close to the road. And you've got a ton of families, um, I can think of a dozen. That have elementary age kids and they're all out, and it's such a cool vibe. I don't know if y'all ever go down through there in the afternoons, but kids are everywhere. And it's so cool, it kind of reminds me of when I was younger running around Calver, but they go from house to house and they're all, you know, anywhere from. Oh, yeah, I mean, they're just all over, and so it's great, but. It creates a situation where a lot of parents are concerned about how fast people drive through there, especially with the amount of traffic that goes through there. And so I've been down there and set myself on Evergreen in an afternoon for about an hour. And I was shocked at how people would come down through there. And with kids on both sides of the road playing, kicking soccer balls, you know, and everybody's hanging out, having a good time. And, you know, they buzz through there like nobody's there. And uh, I, I've had quite a few families that have reached out to me over the last three or four months saying, we need help. Or, you know, some way the city can help with that uh, to kind of curb that speeding. Now, I call it speeding, they may not be speeding. They may be going twenty-five, but when you have everything in such a small area packed together, twenty-five is pretty fast.
Right.
So, I guess I'd like just for y'all to start thinking about that and maybe. Ideas on solutions that you would have. Um, you know, there's a lot of different things you can do. You can throw out all kinds of ideas, some of them I would agree with, some of them I don't like.
Well, you know, the, the memories of people playing door to door, it comes and it goes and it's back again, all right? So loving, loving that. Um, Calver City is a, a subdivisions kind of pieced together. So when you go into the whole hot area, you know, how you, how you get through the, the interior. To the, to the visitor passageways, it really wasn't a planned thing. So Seventh Avenue, where Oak Park, where Seventh goes out in Oak Park, has been a site. From the firefighting days, we'd be called out there from time to time at that intersection, and then the big, long, straight stretch in the curvy section, and there's just. Really was never laid out with a. With a boulevard, I don't really know what you'd call that, second tier of transportation corridor. And if you did it, the, if, if we said, okay, we're gonna go in and have a big project. We're gonna make it where traffic flows safer and wider. Well, the houses down there are gonna get gypped. Out of what we're talking about. That, that loses the character which you're trying to create. The reason you're trying to create the safer environment, it kind of would have damaged it and hurt it. So, you know, Evergreen up around the corner to Ninth Avenue, go up by, you know, uh, Highway ninety-five, it's always a pretty big. Highly traffic road because it's the most direct route. And we've done a lot of work down that lower end to make it safer from a surface perspective.
I don't know if you're talking as much about the widening of the roads or stuff.
No, no, I just threw that out there just to say that the planning for, the planning that we have for trying to, to let people move. Into the interior of these areas, it's, it's just, it, it's quite a few yards, it's not, obviously not miles of. Twenty-five mile an hour speed limit.
John, didn't we discuss with the Parks Board a few years ago about some options like that when we brought it up before about like speed bumps? But it was done in a. Nice way with, with landscaping with it and things like that.
Speed bumps, but offsets.
There you go.
Uh, speed bumps create a big issue with the, your road maintenance. You can't plow them. Without doing damage to your plows, and so it creates a lot of issues that, yes, you may slow the traffic down, but it's gonna really slow down in the wintertime. The other thing is, um. The bump outs, I guess, as they called them or something, Ralph, you may remember that as well, and you.
Wash U.
Yeah, Wash U study created, um. Actually segments where you would be, actually have a. Uh, a landscape thing that would come out and take up about half the road, so you had one, one lane that people had to slow down to get to there. Uh, either way, online, so that's kind of the, the point was, it was, it was, it was a calming, traffic calming device. Uh, which makes a little more sense. Um, really than the speed bumps, the, I know a lot of cities. Have told me they're getting rid of them simply because of the maintenance issues and stuff like.
Well, to me, speed bumps are more of a tool. To try to cut down on traffic flow. To reduce the amount of cars that have chosen that direction to go through to begin with, to discourage people from driving down that street. That's, that's the way it's used in larger metro areas because they don't want you to differentiate whenever. Uh, the computer program says, way says you can get over there that much faster than you encounter a speed bump filter. They're trying to prevent you from doing that at all. And, and I don't know that we're really, but we're talking about safety and slowing down, right?
Yeah, if we can slow people down, the people on those streets benefit quite a bit, and nobody, we're, we're talking about streets that are short. They're not three or four miles long.
And I don't know if that.
On the road for eight or ten seconds, so if you can slow people down a few miles an hour, you're not costing anybody time, more than a second.
Because we, that's, you know, on Seventh Avenue going down to the intersection with Hickory, you know, we put in the flashing lights there to. The signs and stuff to where they would know to stop, you know, of course, there's gonna be people that's not gonna stop. I was just thinking something maybe, we can talk about it more later, but something as simple as maybe some, I mean. Slow children playing or fines imposed or something like that, and then I noticed some people had bought their own.
Bought a lot of those down.
Yeah, uh, the, the Knights bought them and passed them out down Hickory.
And one of the issues around us is they're not stopping on that, coming onto Evergreen, and it's like it, it's the acceleration from there that it's. And, I mean. Scott and Ethan play pickleball in the road half the time just to try to get people to slow down because it's crazy. And we have kids, I mean, the younger kids are up the road a little from us, but it's, it is, it's scary.
And we've had complaints before on M as well, not as bad as Evergreen.
Yeah.
So just, uh, you know, be thinking about that or researching some ideas and, you know, maybe we can talk about it a little bit, but I feel like it's a good time to. Try to do something or show that we're putting some kind of effort forth in making those roads a little safer. And making the environment a little better for those families.
And I will say I've seen our police presence at the inner, the four-way stop there at Hickory and uh.
Yeah.
Seventh that has been pulling people over for not coming to a complete stop. I've seen that more than once now, so that was great.
Got one that lives there, so that.
I wasn't gonna call any names, but.
That is one thing that we heard us in the bicycle friendly communities. Um, when we applied for it, um, was not having residential roads in twenty or less. They say that if you're twenty miles per hour or less, you have a ninety percent chance of surviving if hit by a car. And if you're, even if it's thirty miles per hour, if it jumps down to seventy-five percent.
Thank you.
Do they have any documents out to help guide communities for that? Once you, yeah, once you even get electronic version of that, send, send us. That's a good idea. Thanks, Blair. So there are resources out there and I'm not sure how to, how to commission a traffic study. Uh, John might be, we'll look into, see what kind of. What kind of help we can get with that. I mean, we've talked about the bump outs and the slowdowns and all that kind of stuff, and it really hasn't been something that council reached out and grabbed a hold of. But we're all about reaching out and grabbing a hold of not having people uh, bust their neighborhoods.
Especially with starting the. Bike thing to school, I mean, that brings up more necessity to make sure that people are not speeding that way.
So I'm, I'm sure the officers know some of our frequent flyers of various and sundry. Um, problems, so Dustin, you got anything else?
No, no, thank you.
Ralph got something?
No.
Okay. Nope. Nita?
No.
Okay, last but not least.
Oh, you had a lot, Kevin.
Kevin, Kevin. Kevin's probably just happy to be kind of stationary. When'd you get back? Last week, okay. So, yeah, you should be at full steam by now.
All right, relax and do that. Ready to go.
Okay. We have a second?
Right.
Got a second, all in favor? All right, all right, words are.
The racers are up two to one, just so y'all know.
All right.
What was that? Lead off home?
Not that I'm watching her.
Oh, she's, she's got a live feed going for me and Ralph over here.